Trying to squeeze in.
(baby crying)
Been to these leagues before?
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight to the Burlington City Council meeting today, December 5th, 2017. We're honored to have such a packed house tonight. Took an extra couple of minutes to make sure everyone could get in through security, so we appreciate the patience in this crowded room. I'd like to take a moment to please ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices for the proceedings this evening. And for tonight's invocation, we turn to Councilmember Bob Ward.
Lift our heads, please. Tonight, as we convene for this final city council meeting of the year and proceed with changes in our city council, we are grateful for living in a democracy where we, as citizens, participate in our own governance and can choose our own representatives. We are thankful for all those who voted, who ran for office, and who participated as candidates or supporters of candidates in this past local election. We especially ask for blessings for the newly-elected and re-elected leader, Mayor Ian Baltudis, Councilmember Jim Butler, and Harold Owen. Also, we ask for a special blessing on Mayor Pro Tem Silo Fossett, for whom our community has benefited greatly from his faithful service, and that you further bless him as he continues on his path of community service. As we, as the governing body, continue, we acknowledge that the actions of this council must address the needs of our city and take into account the interests and rights of our citizens. And we ask that our efforts be guided by clear insight and our deliberations with wisdom and our decisions with impartiality. And we ask that our actions be guided by the highest standards of ethics and that our personal faiths give others strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us tonight. Amen.
Before council, our minutes from November 21st, 2017, city council meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes have been approved. We have a special presentation this evening. At this time, I'd like to recognize Representative Stephen Ross.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's an honor. Silo, can you come down?
Representative about showing.
While Silo is coming in, I just want to thank him personally for his contribution. I've known a lot of people from the government, from the United States, from the government. Silo is a true public servant. And, you know, for that, I just want to say thank you from me to you for what you've done. Thank you. Now, I'd like to take a few minutes and read a couple of things, if you don't mind. And I'm gonna read it because it's long. I hope so. This is a proclamation in recognition of Mayor Pro Tem Silo Fossett for his dedicated service to the city of Burlington. Whereas Mr. Silo Fossett was first elected to the Burlington City Council in November 2009, appointed Mayor Pro Tem in November 2014. And whereas Mayor Pro Tem Fossett grew up in Quim Raven and graduated from George Sellers Hospital. And whereas Mayor Pro Tem Fossett retired from LabCorp after 36 years of service. And whereas, prior to his service on the city council, Mr. Fossett was a past member of Burlington Traffic Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, United Way Board of Directors. And whereas, with Mayor Pro Tem Fossett's leadership and support, the city has implemented link transit, opened a free splash park, dedicated a sixth fire station, extended water sewer service, and enhanced the services of the police department. And whereas Mayor Pro Tem Fossett's leadership was instrumental in the revitalization of North Park, including the addition of a permanent farmer's market, a community garden, a library branch, walking trails, basketball courts, and renovated community center. And whereas during his years of service on the Burlington City Council, Mayor Pro Tem Fossett has also received the Governor's Award for volunteer service, the Public Service Award from the National Tate Family Association, and has been appointed to serve on the North Carolina Rural Infrastructure Advisory Committee, the Eastland Elementary Community Advisory Council, Vice Chair of the Alaman's County Community Services Agency Board of Directors, and Chairman of the Alaman's County Transportation Board. And whereas his dedication to the Burlington community, its citizens, and improving the quality of city government services has ultimately left Burlington a better place. Now therefore, I, North Carolina State Representative Stephen Ross, on behalf of the citizens of the city council, the city of Burlington, would hereby issue this proclamation in recognition of Mayor Pro Tem Silo Fossett for his dedication, dedicated service to the city of Burlington as a member of the Burlington City Council this fifth day of December 2017.
Thank you so much.
I have one other thing. And then we have the presentation. This is from the North Carolina General Assembly of Representatives. This is a certificate of recognition. Be it known to all that this certificate is presented to Silo Fossett in honor of his years of service and countless contributions to the city of Burlington. Now therefore, on this fifth day of December in the year 2017, North Carolina House Speaker Tim Moore thanks you for your dedication. Sign above the screen. And on behalf of the city council and the citizens of the city of Burlington, this my privilege presents you the key to the city. And I want to say, this is a special flag, and the reason for that is that the wood that this flag is made out of is wood that came from North Park.
Councilman, Senator, Representative Ross, thank you so much. Representative Ross has been one of my mentors. I feel like I've been a little bit... Now, say everything. Say right now. Councilman, I thank you for being my smiling partner. That'll be over the days. He's the only one I can tell a punch to and enjoy. Councilman, City Attorney, nothing. Thank you. Thank you so much for being my friend and mentor. Councilman Butler, thank you for being so knowledgeable with numbers to help me get through with this. Thank you so much. You're my partner. Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Butler, save your one hand, but thank you so much for the times that we spent together and the things that you taught me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the department, his city employees. I've enjoyed my tour here with the city. It comes from a passion for working for the city of Burlington and the citizens of Burlington. Once you grow up here, you get that sense of responsibility that you have to do something for your city. And I try to do my best for this city. Hopefully, if I get to have it one day, the Lord ask me, what have I done? I have somebody in Burlington that's gonna live. But I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. The councilwoman, hi, it's 5:00 somewhere, so I won't be here that long. So, thank everyone for coming out. And I've enjoyed my tour with the city. I'm not going anywhere in my hometown. Now I can come back and say what I really want. Thank you, Representative Ross, for your service, and thank you for having me along the way. One other thing. Say my rock. My rock is my daughter.
At this time, we recognize City Clerk Renee Ward for the certification of the election.
At this time, I'd like to confirm the abstracted votes of the election of November 7th, 2017, as certified by the Alaman's County Board of Elections and the Uofc County Board of Elections. Votes for Mayor Ian Baltudis, 2,761. Silo Fossett, 2,205. Votes for Councilmember Jim Butler, 2,202. Patrick Mills, 1,877. Harold Owen, 2,895. John Thor 1,992. Writing votes. So let it be confirmed that Ian Baltudis is newly-elected mayor for a two-year term expiring December 2019. Jim Butler, Harold Owen, newly-elected council members for four-year terms expiring December 2021. At this time, I ask Mayor Baltudis to come forward to receive that at the office.
I'd like to welcome my wife, Christina.
Your wife, sure, I hear. I state your name.
Aye, Ian Baltudis.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the said state.
The Constitution of the said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will rail and truly execute.
And that I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
For the city of Burlington.
For the city of Burlington.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
Congratulations.
At this time, it's our pleasure to invite Alaman's County Superior Court Judge Jill Robertson to come forward to administer the oath of office to our newly-elected officials, Jim Butler and Harold Owen.
Before we get started here, I'd like to thank everybody who has served, planning to serve, and soon to serve. It's one of the high honors of the judiciary to get an opportunity to administer the oath to individuals such as yourselves. You give so much of yourself and so much time and sacrifice for the good of your communities. So, you know, I appreciate all of you for all that you do, and thank you for the honor of administering the oath. We're gonna administer the oath to both councilmembers at the same time. We've got someone with the Bible on our left side. Put your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state my name. I, Jim Butler, Patrick Owen. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear that I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful, that I will be faithful and bear truly. And that I will lead to the state of North Carolina. To the state of North Carolina. And to the constitutional powers. And to the constitutional powers. And authorities. And authorities. Regardless, for charge, or may be established. Or may be established. For the government thereof. For the government thereof. And that I will endeavor. And that I will endeavor to support. To support, maintain, and defend. And maintain and defend the Constitution of said state. The Constitution of said state. Not inconsistent with. Not inconsistent with. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge and ability. To the best of my knowledge and ability. And that I will. And that I will. Well and truly execute. Well and truly execute. The duties of the office. The duties of the office. Councilmember. Councilmember. For the city of Burlington. For the city of Burlington. According to the best. According to the best. Of my skill and ability. Of my skill and ability. According to the law. According to the law. So that helps you out. So that helps you out. Congratulations.
All right. I'd like to offer all of our newly-elected folks a moment to just thank any special guests that they might have here tonight with them. Jim?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank my wife and my kids. Megan is here and Grayson. And my oldest son is away at college at the University of Alabama, so roll tide for him. He couldn't be here tonight. My mom and her husband is in the back, and my sister Trisha, and Uncle Michael, and Maxton, we call him Frank. And it's Matthew here, I don't see Matthew, and advocates away at college, too. And then the crowd that just left. You know, it takes a village to raise a child, and it takes a village to help with an election. And sometimes I think they're kind of the same endeavor. It's stressful. But Corbin staff Mike Williams, Frank Cole, and Neil Patel, and Jim Upchurch were here earlier. They just stepped out, and I want to acknowledge their help as well. So, thank you, everyone.
Well, certainly I'd like to thank my wife and aunt Thomas. You gotta move over so I can see her. My brother George, Pat's here. My children, my oldest daughter and her two little ones are in Cary. A little late for a three-year-old, a year and a half to be here, but they would really lighten this thing up a little bit if they could come. I know his daughter's in Boston, pregnant, so she couldn't make the flight, so they couldn't be here. I'd like to thank a number of people who helped me during this process. People who bugged me to run and then helped me in the process of running. It was good to see people again that I've known. It was good to see people take advantage of the opportunity to vote. Now, the concept of voting in our country is one ability we all ought to take advantage of. And I'm glad to see the turnout was better than it has been, and it's gonna be better going forward, quite frankly. But I do appreciate people coming out. And also, I would admit, I certainly look forward to working with one of the finest staffs that in the state of North Carolina and working for you in the city. We go back a long way, and I truly think the people of this community is very fortunate to have the staff working for them we have here in our community. So, thank all of you.
I'd like to again thank my wonderful wife and life partner Christina for all of her support along the way. And thank you to all of our supporters, friends, family, who could make it tonight, as well as those tuning in from home. We appreciate all your support along the way. Without further ado, we'll continue with our agenda. At this time, we recognize City Clerk Renee Ward again.
Members of council, it's our responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. At this time, I add to theory any potential conflicts pursuant to my subject.
Before council, our number of add-on agenda items for the consent agenda. Item G Burlington Alaman's Site 3 Agreement. Item H Set a Date for Public Hearing for Pine Terrace Mobile Home Voluntary Annexation. And Item I 2018 City Council Meeting Schedule. Do I hear a motion to approve these add-on items?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda items have been approved. Before council, is the agenda with the add-on items. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make the motion whether to adopt the agenda with the add-ons, as written.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Agenda has been adopted. The following is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A To Adopt an Ordinance Approving the Following Traffic Commission Recommendations. A request to reduce the speed limit from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour on Kraus Lane from Kirkpatrick Road to the Dead End. And a request to prohibit parking on the south side of Cameron Street from East Sixth Street to Avon Avenue. Item B To Approve the 2017 North Carolina Firemen's Association Annual Roster Certification Pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 58-86-25. Item C To Make the Following Appointments to the Burlington Alaman's Airport Authority for Four-Year Terms Beginning January 1st, 2018, and Expiring on December 31st, 2021. Dr. Samuel Powell, John McDonald, and Keith Hall. Item D To Approve an Inter-local Agreement Between the City of Burlington and the Burlington Alaman's Airport Authority for Sewer Service Expansion. Item E To Approve an Inter-local Agreement Between the City of Burlington and Guilford County for Regulation and Operation of Guilford McIntosh Park. Item F Budget Amendment 2018-22 Animal Services Donation, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Item G To Approve a Contract Between the City of Burlington and S&amp;M E Inc. for Burlington Alaman's Site Number Three Pre-Development Services. Item H To Adopt a Resolution Setting a Date of Public Hearing for January 2nd, 2018, to Receive Public Comments Regarding the Contiguous Voluntary Annexation of Pine Terrace Mobile Home Park. Item I To Approve the 2018 City Council and Work Session Meeting Schedule, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. We have one item of new business before council tonight. Item number one, city council will consider approving the proposed 2018 Fees and Charges Schedule to be effective January 1st, 2018. At this time, we recognize Finance and Risk Management Director Peggy Reese.
Mayor Council, for the opportunity to appear before you, come last night, and in your council packets are people that are recommended for change. It could be a new fee, or deleting an old fee, or changing a current fee. So I'll be happy to entertain your questions.
Any questions from council? All right. Do I hear a motion regarding the fees and charges schedule?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the 2018 fees and charges schedule, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. We have a staff report this evening. City of Burlington, 125 years. At this time, we recognize Director of Public Policy Rachel Kelly.
I'd have to agree, but if you are aware, 2018 is a big year for the city of Burlington. We turned 125 years old. And that is also known as our...
That's quasi-centennial?
I can't say it, so we let the robot lady say it.
Quasque centennial.
Quasque centennial. So, anyhow, we'll be celebrating that on Valentine's Day, February 14th, 2018. So, we've got a brief proposal, just to let you know how we hope to celebrate all year long, this city's 125th year. We'd like to spread that out, starting in February, all through the end of 2018. We'd like to create a central online platform where people can see what we've got going on, what celebrations are happening, join that conversation, and learn about our history. As you'll see, we've got a 125 mark that we can put on many of our publications, and items to let people know that we are celebrating. We'd like to start the social media conversation with a hashtag, and really kick off the event in February with a special event, and kind of light up City Hall, and let folks know we're celebrating all year long. The details are still in the works, but we think you'll like it. We'd like to also include this celebration in existing events throughout the year, our recreation apartments forever celebrating. We've got, you know, the great special events that happen all year long, and we'd like to kind of tip the hat to 125 in each of those events in a different way, so it won't be forgotten throughout the year. We've reached out to ABSS, saving students involved from elementary to middle grades and seniors. Community groups also, we've got preservation for Burlington out there, and other groups doing great work to preserve our history. We'd like to involve the community with photo contests, letting them see historic photos, letting them recreate, share some of their own. We had a history presentation recently that was pretty popular. We think that's a great opportunity to keep doing things like that, and let the city know what we've been doing for 125 years, and where we're going in the future. We're suggesting some historic tours, now-and-then photos, and offering members a print to the community at the end of this year of celebration. So, we'll have more information to come, and we'll share that with you and the community as we go forward, but I wanted to let you know that it's happening. 2018 is a big year, and we do want to celebrate.
Excellent.
Happy to entertain any questions you might have today.
Any questions from council? Awesome. That concludes our agenda items. We have a number of public comments this evening. I'd like to ask folks to please limit their comments to five minutes. We'll begin with Jane Sellers. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, council. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the African-American Cultural and History Center at the work session last night. One thing I did forget to mention is that we also have established a partnership with the May Memorial Library. February the 10th at 2:00 p.m., we will be having that event there, and I'd like to invite each and every one of you in the council to come and be a part of that. As I mentioned last night, that the African-American Cultural and History Center is a center for Alaman's County as a whole, it's not just for Burlington, and we have collected several artifacts, or many artifacts, that is inclusive to Alaman's County as a whole. So, in the future, we will continue to do our pop-up tours, as well as our driving tours. So, if, let me slow down, I'm speaking ahead of myself. So, this is because I'm just a little nervous, but I'm good. Because we will continue to do our pop-up tours and our driving tours, and I'd like to invite you, the council member, to come along and be a part of those tours, as you make your decision in January, as it relates to the contribution, your financial contribution, and the letter of commitment and support to the center. We have, are right now in conversations for a building downtown Burlington. We hope to finalize those at the end of this week, or before the end of the month, so that when we meet again in January, I will have some concrete numbers, as opposed to the budget that I presented to you last night, which is not written stone, it's just a projection of a budget. I also like to mention that tonight, here, we have a number of supporters of the African-American Cultural and History Center. So, if you could just wave your hand if you're here, in support of the center. And I say that to let you know that when we formed and started preserving the African-American history, it wasn't just a group of us that said, hey, let's just do this. No, this is the community that is supporting this. And it's good to see the number, this is just a small representation, we can overpower this room, if you'd like. I'm just saying, so we'll bring them on in. But again, I won't take up too much time. I think you know the importance of preserving the history of Burlington, of Burlington, and Alaman's County. I know this is part of the 2018, they just mentioned it, about the history. And I will say this too, that the presentation that the city of Burlington did a couple of weeks ago, that had, was two and a half hours, a great presentation that Walter Board and Don, what was it, no, Walter Board and Dave Wright, yeah, thank you, Dave Wright presented, it was a great presentation, but like I stated before, there was only one component that was missing, and it wasn't the African-American community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jane, and thank you, everybody. For those of you who may not be aware, last night, we did talk with Jane, had a wonderful presentation, and council has asked that we'll continue that discussion on January 2nd at our city council meeting. So, y'all, welcome back. We're happy to open up more seats if need be. Next, we have Kaya Gordon.
Hi, my name is Kaya, and I am twelve years old. For the past six years, I have been using the way that's to help self-child abuse, and I love your support to help an organization to give a child a smile. You can help by simply purchasing one of these plush animals. His name is Rory, and you can buy them for your child, grandchild, or loved one. And for every single one of these plush animals that are bought, we donate one back to these children right here in our home state, North Carolina. The cost of the plush animal is $19.99 plus tax, and that brings a total up to $21.34. But I fully understand if you guys can't buy any stuffed animals, and you only want to help out an organization, because I gave $21.34, sorry, I will buy you these stuffed animals for any of your children. Last year, we gave 273 smiles, and this year, we want to give more. So, I would like to know if I can count on your support to help give a child a smile this holiday season. Thank you for your time, and you guys will have a good night.
Thank you very much.
I'll take two.
For those of you who'd like to chat with Kaya after the meeting, I encourage you to stick around. We're glad to have her and her family. Kaya, can you introduce your guests who are here with you?
This is my, this is my Mary.
Hi, I'm Mom.
And this is our close friend, David.
Thank you all for coming out again. We're happy to have you back in the council.
We're also on Facebook, so we have PayPal set up. A little bit about the organization. Organization, Kaya and her sister were abused and neglected. They came to us back in 2007, from the state of Virginia. Six years ago, my husband and I wanted to give the girls an opportunity to give back after they had overcome the abuse that they were, went through. So, we had said this was a great opportunity to teach the girls that regardless of what they had been through, that they could be anything that they wanted to be. So, we started the organization and had said, okay, we're going to make this and see what happens. So, we started out, the first year, we were able to raise 38, and give back 38 animals. Over the years, we kind of just kept growing and growing. Three years ago, we were going to stop, because her sister is very special need, and Kaya said, I want to do this, and I'm going to keep going. So, we kind of turned it over to her. So, the first year, Kaya sold, I would say, about 100, and she said, then the next year, I'm going to do more, I'm going to do more. So, last year, she kind of threw us for a loop. So, then she's kind of just kept going with it. So, we kind of stayed in Alaman's County, but then last year, we had so many, that Alaman's County said, we only need this about, so can we venture out across the state? So, now, we went on beyond just Alaman's County, so that's why she says across the state of North Carolina. So, we're actually in seven different counties that we donate to. So, we just continue to grow, and she kind of does this throughout the state of North Carolina. So, it's been a great opportunity to work with her, and with the community in general in the state of North Carolina.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, guys, I said two, I didn't hear anybody else.
I thought one of those was for me.
So, let's speak up up here, Hoppa, let's start off with you over there. I swap you a dog for one.
You take credit cards, too.
We should stick around and chat with Kaya. This has been a wonderful program, we're happy to see you back. This moves us to council comment period. Are there any council comments?
Mayor, I have, I have one comment I'd like to discuss just briefly. Friday of last week, I had the pleasure of addressing many of the incoming mayors throughout the state of North Carolina. The North Carolina leading municipalities held their orientation work day here at City Hall, and along with Mayor Donahue of Reedsville, had the opportunity to address the group. And Harden and I were at the back of the room during Mayor Donahue's comments. He stated something that really caught my attention, and he reminded me of something that's very important, and certainly is very important with this being the swearing-in of our new council, and something that probably should be very important to all of us. He said to the group of newly-elected mayors, he said, remember, our office is nonpartisan. And then when he addressed that new group of mayors, that was the first thing he said. He said, it is nonpartisan for a reason, so that municipalities can be exempt from partisan politics that has divided our country, and both at the state and federal level. It's nonpartisan to foster unity in an elected body that works together. And that's the beauty of municipal politics. I've noticed in our last two election cycles that our municipal campaigns have become more and more partisan in nature. I personally, for one, believe this is a dangerous path for the effectiveness of municipal government. In two short years, there's going to be another election. There'll be other people running for office. I challenge each and every one of us on this council, and anybody else that runs for office in two years, to remember that on these nameplates, there's no Rs and no Ds. There's no U's or Is, or however you acknowledge your political beliefs, but there is a seal behind us, at least I hope there's one behind us, I think it is. And that reminds us where our focus should be. Our focus should be on the city of Burlington, on the residents of Burlington, the citizens of Burlington, and the needs of providing them the services that they deserve and demand. And there's a charter that tells us how we should conduct our business, and we should honor that charter and do it at the highest possible level. The group in front of me tonight deserves no less, no less, than that one thing right there. And even though we campaign as individuals, we must govern as a board, and in the best interest of all of Burlington, and not a special interest group or a party, but for the citizens of Burlington. And that's my charge to this council as we move forward.
Thank you, council member.
I would like to echo some of those same comments. I sat in this chair for 13 years, and was with this organization for 40 years, for a large majority of that time as an employee. We had no idea if the elected body was a Republican, or Democrat, or Independent, or whoever it might have been. We didn't need to have that. We were here to represent all the citizens of our community, no matter where they live, what their income is, what their political affiliation might be. I can say I'm one of those who are independent, and I'm very proud of that. I may be one of the most proudest thing of winning this election as an independent. We tend to, the national stage and the 24-hour news we have now tends to, it appears just to pull communities apart because of the constant partisan rhetoric that we have. And again, I do agree with Councilman Butler, this new mode of partisanship and nonpartisan elections, it's not good for what we stand for. We're a local government. We're here to help local people do local things, and that's why we're elected. And that's why it's such an honor to serve all you all. We are public servants, we're not politicians.
Any other council comments?
Well, on a lighter note, and since we are, this is the last meeting in December, and we're moving into the holidays, I attended the Golden Harmonies concert today, and I'm sorry you missed it, because it was amazing. It was, put me in the spiritual spirit. It had some skits, and some singing, and I got up and rang bells, much my surprise, but Jane Smith got me again.
She's a way of getting you.
Yeah, she does. And anyway, I just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, a wonderful holiday.
And one last thing, Mayor, if I could, if you could just be only appropriate. A number of us today was in Hickory, at the funeral of a long-term colleague and friend of ours, Bob Harcourt, his wife, who passed away after a struggle with cancer. Bob's son is actually an employee with the city. Bob was, it was a difficult day for Bob and his family, but he, during the difficulties, he even pulled me aside to let people know here how many cards he's received, and how much he appreciates their support. So, I was certainly asked that if we could all have Bob and his sons, Clay and Carol's thoughts in our prayers going forward.
Thank you. Also, on a lighter note, this is an exciting month with different events going on. I just want to remind folks about a couple of those items coming up. This Friday is the Holiday Magic Dickens Christmas Event in downtown. Looks like, hopefully, we'll have some great weather out there. Either way, no matter the weather, we'll have some amazing events. It's always a popular, popular evening. There'll even be real snow out there for kids to sled on. So, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in downtown, it pretty much takes over downtown, it's a wonderful event. For those runners out there, it's the reindeer run this Saturday, the No Fills 5K will be going on over at Guilford-McIntosh Lake. Get out your reindeer antlers and red noses. The Model Train exhibit picks up on the 8th of December through the 17th of December down at the Historic Depot. We encourage you to check that out. And Santa's Magic Mailbox has showed up at our police department, and we encourage folks to get those letters into Santa by December 19th, so that Santa has, make sure that he gets them. And then, we have our Christmas in the Park on December 22nd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. down in City Park. And lastly, you may have seen crews out there from Duke Energy, they've been busy since November 8th, replacing residential streetlights with new brighter LED streetlights. We're excited to see the improvement that's making in safety and visibility, especially as that sunlight becomes ever so much more precious through the winter months. So, they'll continue that over the coming months, all across our city. Any other council comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you everyone for coming this evening.